Okay, it's nine thirty on Tuesday, July eighteenth. We're going to call the select meeting of the Select Board to order. First thing is additions and additions.
So, I'd like to add a discussion of closing Class Four roads. With Mark Hunter being here. Discussion with the EDC. And then also a discussion about my vacation time. A lot, so I apologize for a lot there.
Citizens comments? They've seen none. Managers report.
Okay, so a few things. So, everyone knows what's going on with the storm we had last week. And the current situation we are with water. The aqueduct now has the piping on site. They're working today to connect the correct piping that the state requires. When that is installed and water is flowing appropriately through it, they will get numerous testing for bacteria. They will spend that testing and once that testing comes back clean and for hours, the state told us they will lift not only the no drink order, but also the no boil order. So at that point, Woodstock will have clean water to drink and to use. Because of the water breaks, we're still going to ask people to conserve water. Be mindful of how they use the water until we have adequate water up in the tanks. There is still about ten pallets of water at the ESP building. If anyone needs water still, they can get water there. Today, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have various state agencies from the state of Vermont at the high school providing assistance to residents. So anyone who's been impacted by the flood can go there. They're there supposedly eight to four the next three days. Today FEMA is there. I represent some FEMA as residents of the Red Cross as well. I have yet to confirm if FEMA and Red Cross will be there Wednesday and Thursday. Ideally, they will be. But when I talked to them this morning, their supervisor was not on site. So they could not confirm they'll be in the following days. I apologize for the short notice, but I didn't know FEMA was going to be there until I showed up this morning on site. But if anyone has any issues or needs someone to talk to, there will be people there that can help. The high school does have hockey camp going on. So there will be people, you know, in the parking spots. So if you do show up, it may not be long lines, maybe just the hockey kids there playing hockey. So don't be deterred by that. With the storm damage, I just want to publicly thank again the DPW Director, Mark Hunter and his crew. Chief Green, his crew. Chief Bush and now Chief Swanson and their crew. Working nonstop the last eight, nine days to make sure all the roads were open, that residents were safe, that there was water available. And then try and get our messages as quickly as possible. The help has been invaluable in putting Woodstock in the best position possible after what we experienced. I also want to thank all the businesses and residents. There's too many named who have come out and supported the community as best they can, offering free housing, places for people to cook food, places for people to get water. And really offering to help the applications for FEMA and really just being out invisible and trying to help anyone that's been impacted. And try to make it the best we can for people until all this is solved. So my thanks goes at everyone in the Woodstock community that's been out here helping us. And I really appreciate it. Moving on from the storm, there are two updates I want to give. I have in my session, a letter from now Police Chief Joe Swanson, former Chair of the Select Board. Sent his resignation to the board. Now that he's Police Chief, he thought it was best interest not to hold the dual roles. Think past that to board if you want. So, yes.
I just got it. I don't know why I got it, but I got a text from Carrie Paul.
Oh, she knows.
No one's letting people in. Sorry, it was for me because I didn't want to get up, so I was asked.
Oh, that was from you too.
I think so.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll be right on.
Yeah, I don't know where.
I just like Carrie with an "on" and that was my first thoughts. Thank you.
There may be other people waiting to get on.
Oh, yeah. So now Carrie Sarah repeats. So this morning I got a letter resignation from Joe Swanson stepping back from the Select Board. Or stepping off the Select Board due to his new role as Police Chief of the Woodstock Village Police. So that means two things. One is we'll have to set the process for the board to have a new member. And also the board will have to reorganize and elect a vice chair as well. But we can talk about that maybe later today in the meeting if we want. The other update I have is on Friday, the staff accountant Zoe Parent gave me her resignation letter. Her last day will be August fourth, so it's three week notice. I just want to thank her for all the work she done. She's done in time in Woodstock. And wish her the best of luck on whatever next venture is. So that is my manager's report. Any questions on that? Okay, you have the financial report as well. The fiscal year is over, but not over. The last payroll has been done. But as we know, bills can trickle in, you know, for a month or so afterwards. But based on everything we've seen, we should be in a pretty good spot financially anyways. To end the year, so that's a positive. And we're now on FY twenty-four with payroll and everything else. So it's a start fresh and I can go from there.
Okay, thank you. All business, the sewer line agreement, which sucks.
Yep, so this is supposed to be covered on the last meeting, but due to time constraints and lack of forum after an hour, we push it off. So this is sewer work that has to be done by the base I lounged down on Route four. About five, six, seven years ago, the state came in and agreement to kind of just look at and do an assessment on what was going to happen. I believe it was around fifteen thousand dollars at that point. Due to the work that has to get done and that a sewer line is going to interfere with their work. It now has increased to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The state can force us to do the work the way it the way it lines up. So we're kind of in a situation where we don't have any options here. The work won't start until the summer of FY twenty-four. But this has to be signed and sent back to the states immediately. So they can start the work.
The draft I have still says Town of Hartford.
The one I had, you're talking.
The one in our packet still says.
The one I printed out, so I had to change that. Let me see if I have more updated one in my email. And I don't know if my email had changed it came last Friday, two Fridays ago or not. So it could have been that issue as well.
So you're motioning to this?
Yeah.
I would move we sign the supplementary agreement number one, provided that the third revision at the bottom of the first page has changed to Town of Woodstock and Town of Hartford.
A second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All one.
There's no apps, so that's not.
Over here.
Wow.
This thing.
Oh, and just one thing about Mrs. Swanson I forgot to mention. He wanted to be here in person. But as Police Chief, he feels it's duty to attend the funeral of the officer who passed away last week. So he's there in his capacity as Police Chief of Woodstock to show their support to Woodstock.
Potential closure of Cloudland Road. Is there any update? We haven't heard from the town of Hartford or?
No updates on there and that has gone for me at least.
So I think we can table that till we hear from them.
Yeah.
This gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please step up and state your name. I got one in, alright.
My name is Michael Doten. I'm on the. Okay. I'm sure if I was supposed to sit at the big table here. I'm Michael Doten, three, four, eight, eight, Cloudland Road in Pomfret. And I just wanted to let you know that we are presenting to the Pomfret Select Board tomorrow night a plan for foreclosure of Cloudland Road and Barbara Hill notes during the foliage season. Not the whole foliage season, about three to four weeks. So we'll be presenting that plan. I don't feel like I can really say anything about the plan itself because they haven't approved anything yet. They haven't even actually seen it yet. But that's the update at this point. So it is moving forward. We just don't have.
So once you folks have your plan in place, then you can come back to us.
Correct.
Okay, alright, great.
Okay.
Yep.
So just to add a quick thing that relates to this. So Michael and I guess officially from the town of Hartford has asked the EDC to consider possible grants to help pay for the project that they're thinking about. And we've communicated and told them that the timeframe for us to consider it to fit into other things is this year, but not this month. And we've said that 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 we will, and we pointed out the difficulties of the past discussions about assigning funds to other towns.
Right.
But we've said that we will include it on the list of things to consider and that it would probably be in October or November that we would consider.
But this also affects Woodstock residents at that end of Cloudland.
Correct.
Correct. And we didn't say we wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
We were, I tried to be, I sent the letter to you.
Yes, yeah.
Be neutral and just give them the background of the discussions. And said, we will absolutely consider it. It's on the list of options as we do our impact of tourism analysis on Woodstock. This is now on the list of things for us to consider. But I just that we couldn't consider it this month. We would have to wait. We have. It'll be later in the year.
Alright, well, I think.
That was what, that's what I said, the Select Board.
I think, I think that we need to see what the town of Pomfret comes up with. Then maybe even just an emergency meeting.
Just telling you, absent any direction by the Select Board, that's what we, I just wanted you to be aware of that conversation.
And to that EDC funding, the one piece of the closure will actually happen in Stock. So we'll be on the Woodstock end of Cloudland Road. And as you noted, that would affect Woodstock residents as well. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Request for local government certification.
I'm confused by this because we did this already.
I'm trying to find it in the package. I can't find it.
It's I don't know, midway through. I don't have pages. It's about the Historic Preservation Commission. And we did one of these both for the town and for the village, and we appointed a committee.
What page do you have on that? Sorry.
I don't have, oh, seventy-five. Sorry, there are pages. It was submitted by, I think, Matt Powers, who's the Director of the History Center. I don't, I guess we table it since he's not here.
We did do this.
Yeah, we did. Definitely.
Yeah, I think there was a question, Nikki's not here, there's a question whether it was part of the fact or not. Thank you. If we want to move without order, maybe we talk about Class Four roads. I'll look up this stuff on the Historic Center.
Great.
Or we could just table it for the next.
You can table it if you want.
Yeah, let's just table it. He's not here. Then the next item is the South Woodstock Fire Board.
So this is more just to have a conversation about apostle public forum for the residents who talked about the design of the South Woodstock, the new plant. Since I started here, there's been discussions about what's going on. We have some quotes from Daniels that I presented earlier in the spring. But now that the plan is kind of almost finished. I think the residents want to at least have a chance to discuss what they think of the current design, what they want going forward. And so I think it's good to maybe have some kind of public forum where residents can come and discuss what they want. And it can be just the form itself with no, no decision afterwards. But I think an opportunity for them to let them know to come. And also residents who may be against it and don't want to spend the money can come as well and talk about it. So I think with the board's permission, we can kind of organize a, some kind of forum in the next few weeks.
Sure.
Yeah.
I would offer up the South Woodstock Fire Station, but we wouldn't be able to do Zoom because the, the last time I tried to do Zoom from there, the signal wasn't strong enough.
Yeah.
So. If we met at the fire station.
Let's see what Eric and I worked out. We'll go up something. Other business.
So let's go in maybe order of ease. I'll start with my vacation. So I was supposed to be on vacation this week. With that said, my six months starts on August first. The personal policy says that employees can't take vacation until six months into their time. I may try to get a day or two next week depending on the, on the water. So I just want the board's approval to take vacation time next week if possible.
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, Mark Hunter's here from the DPW to talk about Class Four roads closing. This came up, a resident talked about, I think it was ATVs going through.
No, there, it's a Jeep club.
Oh, yes.
Like they are, I heard through, over the, over the weekend, they meet at a coffee shop outside of town. There was roughly around forty Jeeps that used the Class Four roads in town. There's one Class Four road in particular on the end of Arthur Morgan. I have been having a hard time redirecting the road, the water, sorry, that runs off of that road. It runs down Arthur Morgan. But the, the rain that we had last week, it was, it washed out the whole top of the road. There, there are a couple camps or houses on some of the Class Four roads, so we can't. I would like to just close them for the the Jeep club. They're, they're, they're beating the heck out of the, out of the roads. And I can't keep up with the runoff that comes out there. So right now it's so it's doing a lot of damage.
I think the one-off Eastman is similarly challenged.
Yes, yep. So there is, there's a culvert that I need to adjust also on that road.
So the hope was to close it for at least a few weeks till it dries out and.
Hopefully that the rain holds out and then we can open up back up.
Is there a way to phrase it that it's not just that Jeep club, that it's non, non-residents? Would that make sense?
A residents only?
Yes, residents only.
Right.
That, that can, yep.
I think that, yeah.
Makes good sense.
So I'll entertain a motion.
And can I just, Mark, do you want a timeframe on it or do you want on your own judgment?
Hopefully, I mean, I can't predict the weather, but hopefully at some point this, the rain lets up and then they can go out there. So.
So I don't know if we want the motion to be a month or it can be opened up under Mark's guidance.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, you know, I had a motion to close the road until the highway.
I would just say until further notice.
Yeah.
Further notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Alright.
The resident.
There are, I know Eastman has, has a house or camp on there. I mean, it's, people go out there with their horses or whatever. But that, that Jeep club is really doing a lot of damage on them. So forty Jeeps, one Jeep is probably okay. But when that whole club gets together and there's forty of them that go through there, they're, they're doing a lot of damage out there.
President, they, they can come to that camp.
Yes, yep. Yeah.
So horses would be, oh, I'm just trying to think of in South Woodstock at least of GMHA. I don't know what kind of trail rides they have coming up, but are the horses creating damage or is?
No, I don't, I don't see any damage for any of the horses. So that if they have any trail rides coming up for the horses, the Jeep club is going to impact that.
Right. So just motor vehicles.
Right.
Yes.
No non-resident motor vehicles until further notice.
Yes.
That's right.
And so they're just changing, put up rates?
Yeah, I do. There are chains, yeah.
Okay.
There is one at the end of Long Hill also.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of them.
Yeah.
So somebody wants that on the weekends to make sure they don't cut the chain.
Well, I can put, we can put some signs out or post it on the, on the list.
Please know we want to close and have.
Yep.
Check it. You know, you never know.
Yes. Oh, yes.
I have both colors in my car, so.
We don't want to know why, right?
So I would, I guess we kind of made the motion.
Yeah.
Second.
All is in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Last one is a conversation with the EDC.
Thanks. So Eric and Ray had a conversation. Ray called me yesterday about an issue that the EDC was already considering, but will sort of formalize it based on this to consider developing a program to support local businesses who, who need funding as a result of the flood. There is a special meeting now scheduled for Thursday night at six thirty. We have a quorum. I've sent you the
Yeah, you have, yeah, okay.
An initial draft of the agenda. I've asked EDC members if there are other issues that they would like to have included. And then we'll make a recommendation to the Select Board. I suspect the EDC will support this. This is similar to what we did during COVID. I suspect that in this particular case, the dynamics of the program that we would develop are somewhat different. That was a small, very small amount of money immediate with no criteria. And we made it pretty clear, actually, we made it explicit at the beginning that if the financial distress continued, there would be no need for payback. We gave out fifty-eight grants of about, a total of about fifty-eight organizations to about sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars. So some of them applied twice, which we allowed. Four of them paid it back. I don't want to put any constraints on the discussion for the EDC, but I've included my own personal initial thoughts about some of these issues. I'll just quickly go through them. Are businesses in need of financial support? Probably, I say that, put that issue on the table. I don't think we'll debate it for too long, but we have gotten no requests. So I, but I, I think it's reasonable to assume that some will. Who should be eligible? I, my thought is that FEMA has thought through, that this program is for flood relief. FEMA has thought through what applies or doesn't apply. And so anyone that was eligible for FEMA, whether they received it or not, but anyone is eligible for FEMA would be eligible for our program. That, that's a thought. Should we be considering loans or grants? The EDC has already discussed this issue in general and loans are for for-profit businesses. And we've done surveys of the community that they understand that in emergencies, loans or grants are okay. But in general, they would prefer that we not dedicate funds to for-profit businesses unless there's a public accommodation. Like in return for this, it's not just that in return for this, we'll stay in business. But this is a special situation, so that wouldn't apply. So low interest loans probably preferable to grants. What amount should be involved? I think that's unclear. It's clearly more than a thousand dollars, which is what the COVID one was. I don't know. And that, that question about what amount should be involved, I think affects and answer to the next question. Should we consider applications on a rolling basis or at one time? I would suggest that if we do have a program, whether it's loans or grants, that we, we have the program at one time, quickly, or two weeks from now, here's an application. We see what the total of the applications are. And so that we can then make the right decisions rather than doing it on a rolling basis and then the. So what would be the terms of the loan? Again, in my view, a loan, it would be a loan program and it would be a bridge loan until FEMA funds become available. And so we could dispense the funds immediately. We have, and just to the point that Ray, you and I briefly, I think you and Eric briefly discussed. There isn't, I don't believe there is a need, and I think it would be, I have some real concerns about putting any of the existing programs that have already been approved on hold in order to fund this. We have significant funds in the bank because we've made significantly more grants than the grantees have called on. And they don't call on, so we could, we could, we will at our meeting, I can't do it right now because it requires a fair bit of analysis. But we will in our meeting identify exactly how much funds are not yet called on and how much are likely, that are called on are likely to not be called on. I don't believe we would have to put any other programs on unless we decided to, you know, put half a million dollars into this. You know, I think if it was a hundred thousand dollars or that order of magnitude, we would not have to pause any other programs. So, so anyway, so that, so those, that's what we will consider. I also triggered by Eric, your discussion about people appearing at the high school or wherever the agencies are going to appear. We will definitely arrange a webcast with the Small Business Associate, Small Business Administration and promote and will manage, I mean, there's not much for us to do other than get the SBA to come. And maybe you could be helpful with that. We can discuss it. But that's what we did at COVID and it was attended by a lot of businesses. So we'll basically, you know, I don't, within a week or something, I don't want to promise, but I don't know how to do that. But I'm sure we can do it or maybe we can get them to come. But if we can't get them to come, then having a webcast is something else that we will do. Because ultimately, I think it's, or FEMA and the Small Business Administration are the, are going to be the entities that make these loans available. And the idea, my idea, just my idea is that what we would do is bridge, is provide some capital as bridge loans until those are available. Although what I've just read this morning is that the SBA is going to consider these loans within two to three weeks of application. So I mean, that's really fast. So anyway, that's sort of the situation. More information.
The payment, FEMA debts extensive debt. The extended the net won't get the money from FEMA.
Right.
Right away.
I, that, that's what this program would be designed to fill that gap. Now, now whether I, we can't fill all of the gap, but, but it would be designed to, presumably if FEMA is going to give you funds in two and a half or three months, you know, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you might benefit from twenty-five thousand dollars now. And I think since it would be short-term bridge loans, I don't think charging interest or anything like that is, it would just, there's no need to do that. It's not a lot of money and it just makes things complicated. Anyway, this is sort of an agenda for Thursday night's meeting. If you have other additions to the agenda of issues you'd like us to consider, you can tell me now or you could tell me over the next two days. And then of course, like anything, we will come back to the Select Board with a recommendation of whatever it is. And we'll come back immediately, you know, we'll, we'll come to some decision on Thursday.
So what if the businesses aren't eligible for FEMA money? That, that would be one.
Yeah. So we discussed, yeah, so just if I, we, we, a couple of, on the EDC have already started to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have my personal view on that, but. Something I like to consider too is just the, the different needs of different businesses. You know, what the butcher needs and what a corporate needs is probably very different. You know, what the inn needs, what other restaurants need compared to what coffee shop needs could be very different.
Well, I don't, yeah.
And so just, I just to consider, you know, the scope of what some places may need. Like some places may not be open until we have one of the brakes completely repaired.
Right.
You know, because the water level may not just be there. So like that need may be a longer term, more serious need than a smaller shop.
Okay.
You know, I, I know businesses, some of them writing their own water to do dishwashing, you know.
But.
That's great, but a restaurant can't do that, you know, so they're going to be a little longer. So what can we do for them? So just kind of have a kind of a larger idea of how the needs could be different for different businesses.
I think this actually, using different words is. I think this actually, using different words is really exactly the same question that Ray is asking.
Yeah.
Right. If FEMA, for example, doesn't consider that.
Yeah.
What do we do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to, just since, since you, you've asked, you've invited me. My view is that FEMA has thought exactly about these questions hundreds of times, maybe thousands of times. They're tricky issues always, but I think the issues are always exactly the same in any community. And they've figured out how to draw a line. And so what I'm gonna, what I think, it's two days from now, what I think I'm gonna advocate with the EDC and just one vote is that we should follow, that if it's eligible for FEMA, not if you get the FEMA money, because actually one thought is, look, if you're eligible for FEMA and they run out of money, you're still eligible for our program. But that we should use the FEMA eligibility requirements because they've figured out the difference between, you know, gee, I could really use this money because I could expand my business and we had a flood, these things happened, you know, now. And so I just have to trust. So I'm going to argue that we follow the FEMA guidelines because we can't do, we because they've thought about it a lot better, but, and that hopefully, I have to assume would take into account what you've just described.
Well, the other thing is I'd be concerned with is if FEMA doesn't fund businesses that are closed because of not water damage, but lack of water.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Well, we, we could certainly, actually, you know what? Why don't, I said we were going to have a webcast with the SBA, but can I say SBA slash FEMA? And maybe we can work together to figure out how yeah, how, how to engage with FEMA on this. I think it sounds like these are the kind of questions that they could really help with.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll be, yeah, okay.
I would think some of the larger businesses might have some business interruption insurance that would help them as well.
And presumably FEMA is, puts itself below insurance. I mean, not ahead of insurance.
As always, well, yeah.
And your budget's obviously going to be impacted because of the closure of, you know.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Is six thirty that meeting is?
Regular time, Thursday, yeah, like our regular day and time, but not date. Yeah. And we'll be in person here if your family is still visiting. So is that, is that what you had wanted to? Okay, please send me emails up until, I mean, I'm going to post, post this as an agenda late tonight, so it'll appear in the lister, but we can always add issues. So if you were EDC members, we'll add to this list. I presume there's no issues. We should take off the list a little. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Great. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for raising this too. I, you know, I, we were moving on it, but not as quickly and you caused us to move more quickly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Not leaving under the computer now.
Yes.
And I will, I'll talk to you about moving wires at some point.
I know, I can say that same damage too. It's not a big deal. Usually Nikki's on you today.
The next is sewer permit.
So that's on page eighty-one.
So the first one is eight fifty-three Rose Hill Road.
So they're just changing a apartment into a bed and breakfast.
And that doesn't involve any additional fee appearance?
Additional what? Sorry?
Fee.
No, no, all right, not for the sewer now.
Okay.
Going to resolve once or one at a time?
Right, I think one of.
I'd move to approve this one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is awesome.
Awesome.
This one I would assume has a significant fee. There's no indication of it that I see, or maybe I'm.
So increase of four hundred and forty-two.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Sorry. On the back page.
And no fee for this either?
No, there is two thousand six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Page eighty-six.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Sixty-one central.
The address is, I'm staying Paris.
Yeah.
So again, the fee is six thousand three hundred dollars.
I'd move to approve. Second.
There's Mark with that. Stay in Paris Road.
Yes, he's been up there, yeah.
All those in, I just. All those in favor?
Aye.
Always know. Want to go into a detective section?
Yeah.
Minute or we'll do that up?
We'll do that up.
Do you want to vote? Yeah.
Yeah. Can you get Carrie on your phone or? Or I can.
Yeah.
I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
Sorry, Carrie.
So we just just said, should we wait to reorganize the board? Do we have a board member?
I don't think so, because I don't think a new member would fill any of the roles.
Then we can.
If you want to do it now, that's.
Reorganize now then.
So I'd nominate Susan for vice chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
And.
Move your vote.
You're going to oppose yourself.
You can't, you can't. Do we need to formally appoint Ray as chair? He's been acting, so I would move Ray as the chair.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know that I would nominate somebody else. Approval of a minute. Anyone look at the minute? Yes. All those in favor of proving the minutes?
I was not here for May second, so I'm going to abstain from that one, other than that.
Okay, so we'll vote on May second first. All those in favor of May second minute?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of minutes from five? Huh? All the favor of the minutes, five sixteen, five twenty-three, five thirty-one, five thirty-one and six twenty, all those in, make a motion to prove those minutes.
They're moved.
Oh.
Motion made and approved. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Second. Aye.
Fine.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.